It is five o'clock, so I will call this meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to order. We do appear to have a quorum. It's August 16th, 2021. Reba, if you would please call the roll.
Dana Foster.
President.
Keith Furman.
President.
Barbara Harrington McKinney. Randy Houdal.
Here.
Chris McAhill.
Here.
Tom Wilson.
President.
Balthazar, Diana Santana.
President.
Margaret Bergamini.
President.
And Badr, excuse me, Badri on McCullough.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reba. We do have a quorum. Jesse, if you would please proceed with our standard virtual meeting opening statement.
All right. Welcome to our Transportation Policy and Planning Board virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking on the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video for the purposes of quorum and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is, alders, board members and staff have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. To members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed in today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jesse. Approval of minutes from our August 2nd, 2021 meeting, assuming all board members have had a chance to review those if they so chose. Is there a motion to approve? Motion for Alder Furman, is there a second? Second by Badri, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor of approving our minutes from the August 2nd, 2021 meeting. Please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Chair believes unanimous, if you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. Are there any disclosures, communications, or recusals from members of the board? Seeing none. Do we have any registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda?
I show none.
Okay, thank you. Our first item of business for the evening then is Legisar 66098, adopting the Odana area plan as a supplement to the comprehensive plan, directing staff to implement the recommendations contained in the plan.
I believe Dan McCullough will be presenting. Is he on the list?
I am here.
Okay, good.
All right, let me get this going, just a second. Can everybody see my screen as the presentation and not the presentation? There we go. All right. Seems appears to be working. Again, my name is Dan McCullough. I'm one of the staff planners on the Odana area plan. Giving you a recap of, or a brief overview of the plan, and more specifically, really what's changed since we were here last time, which was back in March. So, a little bit of background of the plan. The intent of the plan is really to provide a lot of guidance about future land uses, pedestrian or transportation improvements, so enhance new street grids, enhance bike facilities, really focusing on transit-oriented development since this will be part of the initial east-west BRT corridor, identify potential location locations for parks and open space, and really thinking about economic development, housing, and community services in the area as well. Taking a step back to our comprehensive plan in 2018, this really looked at, you know, how the city could grow and where those most appropriate places to grow were. This was identified as a growth priority, both in terms of the Mineral Point Corridor, the Odana Corridor, as well as the West Town and West Gate areas. And a lot of that is because the plan really ident, you know, one of our growth strategies is infill and redevelopment, and the best opportunity for those is to transition auto-oriented area, commercial areas into mixed-use activity centers. And that really helps us achieve our, our growth mix of 50-50% infill and 50 greenfield, so limiting the city's outward expansion. This is the initial draft that you may have seen. Can you see my cursor over the map at all? Okay, good. Sometimes I'll use a laser pointer, but it seems to cause issues with the PowerPoint. So, the mall areas here, the, the clear areas are kind of the new streets are through there. A lot of mixed-use along, kind of on Gammon and Mineral Point, transitioning to more residential as you move into kind of big box land at West Gate, West Town, employment and commercial along the Beltline interchange. Also identified a new park, as well as some new park space over in the Yellowstone Drive area. Some potential targets. That has kind of morphed a little bit based on some feedback that we have received from the Plan Commission and the public. A lot of that is to really encourage a little bit more flexibility in terms of land use. The initial kind of concept was based around what we thought might happen. But in certain areas, it might be okay if some of that residential land use was employment. It certainly could be fine as residential as well. And we, again, we wanted to have a little higher level of flexibility, so we show a lot more mixed-use. So these are some areas that were in the initial concepts. Those, those orange ovals were residential that have, were recommending transition to mixed-use. Also, some of those commercial areas are again showing to, or commercial unemployment areas have changed to mixed-use as well. And you also notice the, the park spaces have somewhat expanded. This is to, in the mall area, provide a more flexible location since there is a fair amount of uncertainty. And the initial location was actually right at the site of the most recent investment in the mall. So having alternative sites would be a benefit. On the other side, kind of in the Grand Canyon Corridor, that is somewhat of a different type of park. That would be an area where the city would be acquiring property instead of through a dedication process. And we really just kind of wanted to be more flexible as properties come on the market for sale, kind of showing where we could potentially look to acquire new parklands. Some modifications as well to the maximum building heights. Generally, kind of, kind of transitioning a little better to some of the lower density areas and also increasing density along the BRT corridor. So you can kind of see the, where we've decreased some of the height with those, those ovals predominantly, again, adjacent to some of the, the lower density areas and off the BRT corridor. And those green ovals have where we've increased the height in the vicinity, sometimes along the highway, but also in the vicinity of those corridors as well, or those station areas as well. Our street network is largely the same as last time. There were some very slight modifications based on some development proposals or some potential future developments that are coming through or could come through, but largely the same. A lot of potential new streets in the, the West Town area as well. As you may recall, that current block is about 170 acres and bringing that down into more pedestrian scale and a more interconnected nature is certainly, is beneficial from a pedestrian bike as well as transit standpoint as well. Our bike and pedestrian map, looking at, you know, what, what are those facilities going to be and where do they go? Some, I think, you know, on the on-street, that, that exact feature type will be determined in the future, but a lot of continuation of planned on-street or off-street routes with some potential new routes when we have those opportunities, as well as kind of filling in those missing sidewalk pieces throughout the, throughout the plan area. We did, since last time, we also took a look at some street section designs. So what we're looking at on the left is a potential design for Odana, the extension through the mall area. Based on some initial traffic projections, we're recommending a buffered bike lane, parking on both sides, as well as a very wide terrace. We're hoping to have a terrace that is wide enough to support, you know, a nice business, you know, sidewalk cafes, but also wide enough to support really healthy tree canopy growth and also some stormwater features, you know, as those are developed. At the same time, it's kind of tough. We don't want to keep it so what, you know, the commercial areas tend to feed off each, each other. So where you have an active ground floor on one side, it's, it's great for pedestrians to be able to look across and see what's going on the, the other side. So trying to keep, it's, again, it's trying to balance that narrow versus wide. There's, there's some pedestrian synergies at narrow corridors, but also we do need to have some space for, for all those features that need to occur in those streets. The other is some of the other kind of more collector streets through the area where, where we're expecting lower volumes. We're recommending parking only on one side. A lot of those areas, there isn't the need for parking on both sides. But continuing with those on-street facilities as well as those wide terraces. Also, we're recommending proactive rezoning and official mapping. This has been kind of going through the process with Milwaukee Street as well as the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plans and recognizing that there was likely going to be a desire to pursue this. We're kind of building in the recommendations during the planning process for an action following. So generally, why we're doing this is to encourage redevelopment consistent with plan recommendations by simplifying the development process and to really discourage debt development that's really detrimental to the character that's envisioned by the plan. Sometimes, you know, when you change zoning, you allow a lot of different land uses. Some of those may not be 100% identical to plan recommendations, but they're generally compatible. So this, the recommendations are in the plan are to, if, if the Common Council wants to proceed with this official zoning, or I'm sorry, rezoning and official mapping, this would be a good starting point. This is not in any way changing the zoning or officially mapping these streets as part of this approval. So we're still kind of learning the policy on this as we go through, but generally, we have some pretty good feedback from Plan Commission so far. In terms of rezoning, generally, we're avoiding creating non-conforming uses and really trying to encourage rezoning areas where we want to encourage development first. So the, the areas in the white outlines with the black text are the areas that are recommended for rezoning. So RMX, which is one of our most intense new mixed-use districts outside the downtown, is recommended for all of the West Town area and all of the station areas along Mineral Point Road. As we move away from the corridor, stepping down to another pretty still intense mixed-use district, CCT, where that makes sense and changing some of those other SC that's out of a district to kind of match the, the balance of the research park. In terms of streets that we're recommending for official mapping, it kind of goes back to some of the policy direction that we've been given in the past, which is to, if it Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan, the guidance was to really officially map really those most critical streets, those primary streets that go to and through the site. One thing that is somewhat different with this plan though, we have a lot of existing buildings and these, these large sites, so the mall areas, they don't have a front lot line. And when we do map, officially map a street, you can use that official map designation as a front lot line for the purposes of a zoning approval. So you don't necessarily need street frontage. This would accommodate that, particularly in some of those initial development phases. So we were, we're recommending a little bit more, more frequent streets within the, the mall areas. Why you're seeing a lot more dashed. We are recommending that the, we avoid officially mapping portions of streets that go through the buildings. And that really gets to the prohibition on issuing building permits in officially mapped areas. We don't want to try to, you know, close these buildings before they're ready. We will, you know, we want to be a partner with the mall owners and, and don't want to be, you know, have such a burdensome regulation, regulatory process where it's, it's, you know, negatively impacting local businesses and structures. So as you may recall, this is just a, a potential graphic showing what the, the build-out could look like. So this is the current condition in West Town. A lot of open space, a lot of surface parking, kind of oriented around the Ring Road. One of the things that we, I think the plan really does well is try to create an initial phase of development that's really focused on infill. So that is why those, officially mapping those streets could be important. All of this new development can happen without any demolition. As we move forward, as, as property owners and, and building owners are ready to redevelop, we could envision a very intense redevelopment that occurs. Maybe the park space doesn't occur in this location, but we want to make sure, again, with that flexibility of other areas, that, that there is that flexibility to kind of adjust baked into the plan. Going to highlight some of the land use and transportation recommendations that are included in the plan. This is really, this is not necessarily verbatim, it's kind of a summary. But implement the, the local street network that's, and officially map those future streets as recommended, that typically occurs through the subdivision redevelopment process. Work with DOT on those beltline crossings to improve connectivity across the Beltline for, for pedestrians, bicycles, transit, as well as other vehicles. Support the BRT and the network redesign and implement transit redevelopment around and throughout the plan area. Also, when we're thinking about those BRT stations, make sure we're incorporating some bike and ride features. So we are expanding the kind of the last mile, first mile, last mile connections. So implement the bike network, you know, over time, as the budget allows, depending, again, depending upon that exact type. So pedestrian bike infrastructure, make sure that we are thinking about that, that terrace areas and getting the pedestrian level lighting, the bike racks, benches, really creating that active and attractive pedestrian environment. Implement a bicycle wayfinding system so people know where they're going. Improve pedestrian crossings either through crosswalk islands, striping, RFVs, bump outs, again, those are kind of discussed a little bit more in the plan. And use existing and future kids to the extent possible to fund BRT and other transportation infrastructure projects. We're about halfway through our process. We went with Economic Development Committee and Board of Park Commissioners. You are our last BCC before we go to Plan Commission, which is our lead. That is next Monday, and then on to Common Council. And at that, I can either take questions now or if there's public comment after that.
Thanks, Dan. I don't believe we have any registrations for public comment, so questions for Dan. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, Dan. Could you, I think you had a slide about the streets that you were planning on recommending for official mapping.
Yep.
So these are the, the black.
The black dashed, correct.
So my question was, have you done an analysis, and if not, can you of the proposed future plan, head and bike routes, for considerations for mapping as well?
So one of the reasons why we wanted to look at the sections is we have an idea of how much space we need when we move to that official mapping phase. So to that extent, we, you know, we kind of have an idea of what we want in terms of right-of-way with. Looking to official, I, I guess if the question is, are we looking to officially map paths specifically? Kind of as we go through that official map process on, on the streets?
Yeah, so, I mean, it makes sense that not, that you're not proposing to officially map every street similar to what we did with Milwaukee Street. So that would be in terms of just like highlighting the kind of key or major roadways. And then obviously, within those, I mean, my assumption is that you're going to choose a right-of-way with to map that accommodate sidewalks, whatever bike features are needed within that right-of-way.
Yes.
I think it was sort of so separate from that, perhaps like what we did with Milwaukee Street, where there was a recommendation for a side pass on there, for example. So we ended up actually mapping an extension of the existing right-of-way to facilitate that in the future. So that would be one, like one quick question. Is there any, I mean, I know we're already working to get a side path on Mineral Point, but are there any other streets where we would want to map? Not necessarily a new street, but some additional right-of-way, either adjacent to, to an existing one, like we do on Milwaukee, or any standalone path, proposed path alignments that we don't currently have right-of-way for. Those, I believe, could also be mapped, even though we can't condemn for them. I believe we can use the official mapping process.
So let me, let me take a quick look. Where we're recommending off-street paths. So there is, there is kind of the path on the crossing, that planned path on, I guess that is Grand Canyon. We did not look at officially mapping that. That wasn't, we thought about. There is the plans off-street path on Mineral Point. That, I believe there's capacity, that's based in that area. So we did not consider, you know, officially mapping that. But I, I think, you know, one of the benefits of having the recommendation in the plan is it's not necessarily putting all of this in front of us. You know, as we go through that process, we can kind of take a finer look at where we need the additional right-of-way for those facilities.
Like Tom, I have a comment on this one.
Yeah, just a note on the Mineral Point. There isn't necessarily exactly enough right-of-way for that. We're calling it a widened sidewalk. And so we'll be purchasing that, and that's planned in the next 18 months.
Thanks for that update. So I, I guess, Dan, my, my suggestion would be if we could have somebody take a look at perhaps this, you know, these recommended routes with, with an eye towards, is there any right-of-way that is needed in order to, to carry this plan out? And consider adding some of those into what we would propose to, to officially map.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Is there any objection to me asking a question? All right, seeing none. So regarding the official mapping versus unofficial mapping, I, I noticed that the crossings of the Beltline were unofficially mapped. I'm sitting on that advisory committee for the, the revised sort of Beltline study. And I'm just curious if Dan, you, or maybe Tom, you know, is, do you envision any impact of officially mapping those versus unofficially mapping those on the DOT's decision or their calculus on what they're going to put resources toward? They've indicated that, you know, the, the resources are not going to be unlimited, so they may focus them more towards one thing or another, say crossings versus expansion. Any thoughts on that?
So I guess one thing that I can add, you know, particularly in the West Town area, you know, we were, the, the street network that would support that crossing that would likely be the extension of Westfield or one of the, the, obviously, the other adjacent north-south. And we wanted to make sure that we could officially map those two, kind of that most southern, more cross-street. I would say there, there's just a lot of uncertainty as to where those Beltline crossings would occur. And with that, without a little bit more engineering study, you know, we just, I didn't think there was enough certainty to move forward with official mapping of those segments. Tom may have some information he could add as well.
I know the DOT is really early in their, in their process. I just want to make sure that we're positioned in the best way that we can to advocate for, for the additional crossings when that time comes. But go ahead, Tom.
Yeah. I think there are some geometric constraints on feasibility. For instance, the, the crossing, you know, connecting Odana Road to the crossing that also connects across the way. And so to put a permanent kind of constraint on development and something where we don't have the feasibility figured out might be a little bit premature. But then, I think that being said, if, if the DOT did some more study and determine the feasibility on some of these crossings, then, you know, a year or two from now, officially mapping them, you know, there would be value in that, and that would preserve the opportunity for that investment, whether it be near-term or long-term.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments on the presentation? All right, seeing none. Hold on here. Is there a motion? Alder Furman.
I move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Badri. Discussion, Alder Furman, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, I can briefly discuss it. I, I, I have said this at other meetings, I'll say it again here. I greatly appreciate all the work that staff has put into this. I've been to all the community meetings and the outreach has just been absolutely fantastic. So this is an exciting plan for the west side and look forward to it being adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Is there any additional comments? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. And maybe, Dan, you can just answer this. I don't know, does, with that recommendation that I made around taking a look at, at adding mapping for bike facilities, would that be included in your report to Plan Commission as is? Or would it need to be included in the motion in order for it to be in final Plan Commission?
I think per, per order, it, it, what is included in the, the motion is what we need to respond to when we go to Plan Commission, but it's certainly something we wouldn't object to.
So if, if it's an order, I would just propose an amendment to add that in there, that a recommendation to consider officially mapping elements of the proposed bike network.
I'm okay with that being a friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you, Alder Foster. Thank you, Alder Furman. Any additional discussion or comments? Seeing none on the motion to recommend adoption of the Odana area plan as a supplement to the comprehensive plan and directing staff to implement that, recommendations of that plan with the additional recommendation of considering the official mapping, I'm sorry, including the official mapping of elements of the pet bike network into that plan. All those in favor of recommending adoption, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Chair believes unanimous, if you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. Our next item is Legisar 66898, Complete Green Streets. Update on Let's Talk Streets.
All right, so I have with me here the consultants who've been working with us on this project, both staff from Tool Design Group and Equity by Design. And we're going to talk first about Let's Talk Street, which streets, and our Phase 1 engagement that has been completed so far, which is engagement not just for the Complete and Green Streets project, but also for Vision Zero and other sort of transportation-related projects. And then we'll talk a bit more specifically about Complete and Green Streets and kind of where that project is and what, how the engagement kind of is impacting that and some of the things that will be coming up in the near term this year. So I will turn it over to Adam, who has the presentation, and he can get us started, along with Annette Miller from Equity by Design and another staffer, Shemira, I think, from Equity by Design was going to be here as well to help.
All right. Great, well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. My name is Adam Wood. I'm with Tool Design. And as Renee mentioned, Annette and Shemira are with Equity by Design, and we're consultants on this project for the city. And I know I've been here with several of you in the past, so glad to be back tonight. I'm going to just kick it off real quickly and then turn it over to Annette. Our agenda for this presentation is, as, as Renee just said, to give you an update on the outreach of the overall comprehensive Let's Talk Streets effort and then to drill down a little bit for Complete Green Streets to talk about the mode hierarchy and foundation. And then I'll wrap it up with a little bit of an update on the project schedule. So with that, I will turn it over to Annette. So with that, I will turn it over to Annette.
Let me unmute, let me unmute myself. So it's great to be here with you all tonight. And what I want to do is talk about what we've been experiencing as we've done the Stage One Outreach in terms of meeting our goals and objectives. As we had shared with you when we started this process is that we wanted to make sure that we let people know in the community, what are the, what's the process, what are the programs that are involved with Complete Green Streets? Really talk, give a story about Madison Streets and, and really help them understand that there are competing demands. So that's, that's what our overall goal has been. And as part of the engagement strategy, what we really wanted to do was make sure that we could learn about what their shared, what community members' shared values and priorities are. Help us understand how difficult or easy it is to get around and in, in different ways when we think about multimodal transportation. And then also really understand what are the different experiences that people have between different individual people, but more importantly, between different constituent groups. And so we would ask, you know, different questions like, what is your experience? Like, you know, how do you envision, if you were to center cars, if you didn't center cars, what would, what would it feel like in terms of thinking about streets? What would you rather? So really trying to make sure that when we ask questions, they're open-ended enough so we can help people understand that there are these trade-offs that folks need to be thinking about. And also help them not just center their own thinking, but think about other constituencies and stakeholders too in this process. Also really thinking about how we want to make sure that we emphasize safety, that we really want to focus on diversity of experiences, not just our own. Because there's lots of different people who live in this community and we need to share the space. Next slide, please. So with that being said, this has been the timeline that we've been under. So we've really been working to make sure that we recruit ambassadors to help us get the word out about this Let's Talk Streets. Is how we've branded the work because we feel like that's a user-friendly language that people can understand instead of using Complete Streets. No, no one really would know what that is. But if we say, hey, can we talk about streets? People can wrap their head around that. So have been talking to different neighborhood, neighborhoods and people in neighborhoods to see how they can help support us in this work. We put out a survey early on back in June. And we'll be talking more about that. And then we also did host an open house that was virtual, one in the evening and one over the lunch hour. And then we did some walking engagement focus groups in a couple of identified neighborhoods. So what I want to do is talk to you about what we learned when we did this, what we're calling Stage One Engagement. Next slide. So here's an overall summary of what we, what happened over the summer. So we received 200 general survey responses from the community. And then we did two walking engagements, which ended up having 17 attendees. And then we had those two open houses in June, which we ended up with 30 attendees. If you look at the data, what's interesting that I will call out is that if you look at age demographics, we, with the survey itself, we got a younger folks filling out the survey. So more in the 28% in 36 to 50, whereas with the walking engagement, we ended up having older people attending. But with the walking engagement, we had 65% BIPOC. So we had an engaged, older BIPOC community made up of Latino, African-American, mixed race. People who were, we, we had people who were veterans, formerly incarcerated, low, all of them were low income. And we had two individuals that actually were present and they were really representing a resident council of 10 members. With the open house, a majority of the attendees were white with some racial, ethnic diversity, primarily male was represented. And if you look, there was a lot of consistency between the survey and the open house in terms of where people were from. We had Near West, we had some Raymond Road, Elver, Odana, Ismus area. And that was true for the open house with the addition of some North Side, Near East folks. With the walking engagement, we, again, were really intentional about targeting our diverse stakeholders. So we were in the Darbo, South Madison, Green Bush and North Side area. We were able to really draw pretty strongly from the Darbo, South Madison area. So what we presented to those groups is we asked them, how do we make streets people-centered versus car-dominated? And really talked to them and, and wanted to listen and learn about what their experiences had been from their point of view. Next slide. So following is going to be a series of themes that came from the survey in particular. And Myra, my colleague, who is our engagement consultant, did this work for us. So I'm going to let her share with you what the results were from the survey. Myra?
Excellent. I am the engagement consultant for Equity by Design. And I will kind of go over what were some of the highlights and responses that we got from the 202 people who filled out the survey. Next slide. So one of the things that we really wanted to gain a perspective is, is not only people's point of view when it comes to streets, but what, how does it make them feel? So one of the things that we asked is what do they enjoy about streets? And, and what is it that they don't enjoy? So if we start with what they enjoy about the streets, they really like the ease of access, the access to bike paths, sidewalks, the infrastructure that is currently in place. We had about 37% of people mention that they really enjoy that part of Madison Streets. But they also like the greenery, the nature aspect of when it comes to being in a city. One of the things that they didn't enjoy about the streets is they didn't feel safe. A lot of the respondents mentioned speeding. Speeding was their number one concern in addition to having a better infrastructure. They did realize that they enjoy the current infrastructure, but they do see a lot of opportunity to help better maintain that and increase the, the current infrastructure. As far as for the folks who answered that it's not easy to get around Madison, we really wanted to ask them why? What is it that makes them not be, you know, easily get, get around this city of Madison? And the majority responded with the bus system. They felt that the bus system is not reliable. There's too many transfers if they need to get from point A to point B. And its availability, the hours of it, it's not very convenient towards them. But then also too, there is a lot of incomplete and broken infrastructure, which is what we heard from the respondents who also mentioned things that they didn't enjoy about Madison Streets. Next slide. For our BIPOC community, we did see a trend that they are three more times likely than, than the white respondents for them for it not to get easy to be around. They really find it a hard time to get around the city of, of Madison. And we did notice that trend with the respondents that we, we got is that the Black Indigenous and people of color are three, three times more likely for them to, to have difficulties or challenges getting around the Madison Streets. As far as the pandemic, we really wanted to, to see people's perspective on behaviors. Now that the pandemic restriction has been lifted and removed, we wanted to see if their habits would change in the near future about how they got around. And about 30% of those who responded would ride with others, use a bus, you know, the scooters. But people will drive less and use other types of mode. So definitely figuring out ways for them to use other types of public transit. People also reported that they were going to change their driving, driving habits over the next six months. 25, 35% of the folks who identify as Black, Hispanic and white stated that they will change how they drive, when they drive alone in the near future. As far as experiences in relation to their age, we did find a lot of mentions with not feeling safe while walking and not feeling safe being around Madison Streets. That was a number one feedback that we saw, that we noticed that people who had negative experiences based on their age, age was that they didn't feel safe around walking. They also, again, highlighted the infrastructure that they see as not complete or not maintained that's currently in their neighborhoods. And then followed by, you know, snow removal is inconsistent, very limited or no car parking. Poor signage was another one that was mentioned greatly. And there is no, there is an additional bus access or for them to, to really get around. But they also mentioned that it's expensive to use a taxi or a shared ride service. I'm not sure if we're taking the floor for any questions on the survey. Otherwise, I'll hand it back to Annette to finish with the open house.
Okay, so moving forward with what we learned in the open house. What, next slide piece. So we had actual 25 contributors. We had 30 people in attendance. But when we talk about the data that we received from that particular event, which was held two different days, one in the evening, one during the day, these were some of the responses that came from that group of individuals. So danger, worried about being hit by a car, our speed and lack, and lack of saying. Community wanting to be able to run into neighbors and seeing friends, wanting better connection for getting everywhere by bike and walking. I thought it was interesting that someone said pedestrianize inner square. So really thinking about how it could really be people-centered and rather than car-centered and really liking that feature. Really thinking about that the focus of a lot, the focus of streets has been moving vehicles quickly and efficiently as possible because the question we had asked is, you know, what do you think the purpose of streets are today? And then what we also heard from people is that what they'd like aspirationally is the ability to safely use public space. So you keep hearing safety come up a lot. And then you also hear connectivity as well as putting people first and not cars. And then people complaining that they can't get where they want easily. You can by car, but not by walking or biking or transit, as someone else said. And then this desire to have, have a stronger, you know, a stronger connection with nature. So seeing more greenery, trees, having more pedestrian spaces, slowing the traffic, while also thinking about how we can absorb storm water. And, you know, obviously this notion of climate change and sustainability being very much woven into this. What I find very interesting about this, the open house, because as I told you, primarily male, primarily white, is a lot of these comments are also acutely felt by Black Indigenous people of color. And what I need people to understand is that it's felt more acutely. So the bottom line is, is that, you know, there is a lot of resonation between what people of color and what the white community is experiencing. But it's felt more acutely by our Black Indigenous people of color. And so if we could really solve for a lot of these issues, the point is, is that everybody benefits. But right now, the pain point is felt more deeply with our diverse populations and constituents the most. So next slide. With the walking engagement, like we said, we had two sessions. We focused our sessions in Darbo and we were over on South Park Street. And so we had 17 attendees. The highlights there, again, crossing safely. Some different pieces of information that came out was about the walk and the bike paths. Talking about the fact that, you know, the, the paths are almost similar. Some comments that came up is like, in some ways, the bike paths are like the streets for cars. Is that, you know, it's fast and there's no ability to rest or to savor the space and appreciate the space and the greenery that having these walking paths, bike paths offer. So we're finding that there was some concern about bike paths being safe as well. The other thing that people brought up was, you know, there aren't direct routes for pedestrians. You know, if you want to get somewhere, you have to use your car to get there. And so that was a big complaint is that people would like to be able to access local businesses and local services and their jobs and be able to, and there, for there to be a direct route to do it and not this unsafe, convoluted, indirect ways if they were to try to walk and it not be safe. The other piece that came up was family and kids' safety, a lot of concerns around that. And also a discussion around blind spots. There were actually some people in these groups that had been harmed several times by vehicles in this group. And so blind spots being one of the culprits of that. The other priority and value that came up again, and I'd already spoke to it when talking about direct routes for pedestrians, is also this ability to really access local business, local, you know, local nearby services and to be able to get to jobs. That, the, the way it's set up right now, everything is either downtown or, you know, east town, west town kind of centric or office park. But anything that's sort of local, in the near neighborhoods, you know, small businesses, that, that's not easy to get to right now. Last and final thing that we really heard a lot is the inequity in low-income neighborhoods. When it comes to the, they talked a lot about how they look at their neighborhoods and then they look at their white neighborhood counterparts. And when it comes to safety, road conditions, the ability to easily get in and out of their neighborhoods, that is extremely inequitable. So one of the things I think that they're hoping is that with this initiative that that will be rectified and addressed. And interestingly enough, Monroe Street was lifted up as an ideal. When they think about the kind of neighborhood that they would like to have, they would like a neighborhood that's safe, it's easy to cross, even though there are cars that are trying to commute through that space. It's done in a way where it's people-first, businesses, local businesses and services are supported. The signage is really clean and clear. There's blinking lights, there's color blocking on the grounds. These are all things that the neighborhoods that these people live in don't see, don't have, don't have access to. Next slide. So I'm going to summarize kind of what we learned then from having these surveys, walking engagements and the open house. So what we learned from an engagement perspective is that we all know in general, summer is not conducive to engagement. It kind of, we know it goes down. But because of COVID, COVID really broke the cycle of how people listen, engage and interact with community efforts. So we had an even more challenging time trying to bring people into the space or trying to find where people are because, because of COVID, people are worrying about jobs, they're worrying about their health, they're thinking about how they're going to get themselves back on their feet. They weren't really interested in having conversations about things that weren't really specific to that. The other thing that we learned is that youth were not, were not showing up to programming. So youth programming got really disrupted. It was, and so youth weren't at programming. And so we weren't able to do an outreach the way we had hoped this summer to include youth. So we're hoping that with Stage Two, we'll be able to do that. So ultimately what that resulted in is that, as you might imagine, people were very focused on themselves and their immediate needs, really looking to their family. Now that the, you know, the city and the state had opened up, people were really looking to reconnect with family, friends and loved ones. And, and that was their focus while also looking to their immediate needs and trying to figure out what does it mean to, to be in a, you know, and live and live now with COVID restrictions being lifted. So the reason I bring this up is that we think that what we learned with all the data that we collected, which is, is pretty solid, we feel like it can inform and give direction, but we would not want people to base their final analysis and final thinking on this, that this is preliminary information that gives us a guide in terms of what direction to go. But we really would like the opportunity in the Stage Two engagement to really test out and get affirmation and confirmation of what we learned in Stage One and really make sure that we spend some time with very specific demographic groups talking through some of the values that we want to present to you in, in just a moment in terms of what we'd like to lift up. Next slide. So in terms of what we learned from a findings perspective, you heard infrastructure is broken or non-existent, particularly in low-income areas. Bike, bikes feel like Um bike uh bikes feel like freeways um and versus really using that those pathways as a way to connect and enjoy the surrounding area. There is bike pedestrian tension, which seems kind of counterintuitive to Madison being ranked, you know, best for bikers and bike paths. Um and then um what was also lifted up was trees, green and nature, um people really wanting outdoor and access. And of course, we wouldn't be surprised by that thinking from these groups just because of the fact that people were really kept in-house for the past twelve months. So there's a new appreciation for being outdoors and engaging with nature. And then a really big one that came up was clear signage inconsistent for all multi-modal ways of movement at intersections. Um with different kinds of people living in our community uh with different backgrounds about how they understand um you know, driving and biking and uh being a walker or taking transit. We've got to do a more consistent job of really making sure that our signage and our policies around signage is consistent everywhere so that people really understand what to do um and how to keep people safe. And it and it is inconsistent and people were talking about that. So I just think that that's something that you all should uh be thinking about. And um so that that's what we learned uh with um with stage one engagement. Um so I think that I might be uh so so then this lands us to what would we put forward as recommended values for Let's Talk Streets, having done the stage one engagement. So clearly you can hear the putting people first, so prioritizing the safety, comfort and wellbeing um while de-emphasizing, you know, um how fast uh people go, whether it's a bike or a car. And also um really thinking about convenience, convenience for who, right? Um supporting community was another key value that came up. So really creating safe, welcoming places and spaces and emphasizing short trips and access to local destinations. And again, I would say for both uh cars and bikes. Um so that's a really interesting sort of thinking. We've been really focused on on cars, but we've also got to think about bikes too. Like, how can we make the bike paths um and spaces welcoming as well? Um and also thinking about how um those trips can be short and um how you can peel off of those paths to be able to get to local destinations. Of course, uh centering equity, so really thinking about how we engage inclusively, how we provide access um to opportunities um while also prioritizing and supporting the needs of historically underserved people. So really making sure that there's not these wild swings between neighborhoods about what people have or don't have when it comes to safe streets, um good infrastructure, um that the policies be um equitable across the board. And obviously, that is the intent and purpose of what um Complete Green Streets is about and bringing us in to do this. And then, of course, fostering sustainability. So promote walking, biking and transit and use of streets to expand the urban canopy and clean stormwater. So um these really were very solid in terms of what we heard in stage one. I think in stage two, what we want to do is really test these and really start having some um specific conversations with people about what that would look like in terms of uh different kinds of archetype models that we would put out there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Adam.
All right, thanks, Annette. And you know, you hit on a really uh key point here, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit more in the next section as well, which is putting these forward um in in front of the community and getting people's reactions and responses to them is going to be an important part of our next stage of outreach. So I'm going to transition a little bit here to talk a bit more specifically about the Complete Green Streets component of this project um and and touch in on the mode hierarchy and foundation. Um mode hierarchy, we talked a little bit about um some of the different approaches and and what we're proposing as an approach for this project. And then as far as the um typology goes, we're not going to be, we don't yet have a typology to present to you. We're going to talk a little about the foundation or the building blocks that we're putting in there um to create the typology and get some feedback on that. Uh if you have watched the video on the website or attended the um the the public meetings, you probably saw this slide, which is talking about the conventional approach used across North America to street design. And this is really a reflection of perhaps the unwritten mode hierarchy that's out there, which is we start with functional classification. If it's an arterial street, that means we need to provide four lanes or six lanes. Our design speed is going to be thirty-five, forty, maybe forty-five miles per hour, depending on where you are in the country. And that's where we start, we put those lanes in place. Um if it's a truck route, maybe we make the lanes wider. If it's a bus route, maybe the outside lane is a little bit wider. And then we typically look and see what's left over uh in terms of our right of way. And we put some sidewalks, maybe bike lanes if we have the space, maybe street trees. And the end result is something like this, where you see the person in an electric wheelchair um kind of navigating around uh fire hydrants and so forth. This is really what has um set the foundation for uh street design in the U.S. for over half of a century and closer to a full century. And so that default conventional mode hierarchy is cars first. And that approach works pretty well when the focus is on moving cars efficiently. But when you try to make other things in the right of way work, it gets really complicated. So I want to use an analogy here. Um we, not any one, any of us here hopefully, but uh humans used to think that the earth was uh at the center of the universe. Um as astronomy grew, astronomers had to make sense of the irregular orbits of the planets and the stars. They didn't actually go around the earth in a circular orbit. So they had to come up with really complex math, complex orbital patterns to explain the movement. Um and they were wrong. Uh eventually, uh the astronomer Copernicus did something really simple. He he changed the central assumption and put the sun at the center of the solar system. Now, he technically thought the sun was the center of the universe, but let's ignore that for a minute. When we put the sun at the center of the solar system, um the orbits of the planets at least suddenly became very simple. And the same can kind of be said about cities, which um around the world developed centuries or even thousands of years before cars. But when we started designing our cities around cars, it became increasingly challenging for us to meet um goals of sustainability and quality of life and and affordability and equity as well. Um so again, our central assumption makes a pretty significant difference. So this is all leading up to our discussion about modal hierarchy, which is really one of the foundational steps in uh in a complete streets plan and a complete streets program. And it's really something that's relatively simple, uh but if it's really fully embraced and and put in policy, it can have significant implications for the decisions that you make around streets and transportation. So what is a hierarchy and how do we use it? At a minimum, uh it's something that establishes policy and and guides decisions and signals intent. Uh bare minimum, having your hierarchy essentially says, this is what we're prioritizing when we make our decisions. Um it's a way also to create accountability and a way to help you guide trade-offs. If you don't have space for a bus lane and a bike lane and on-street parking, how do you choose which ones get taken out and how do you choose which ones stand? So here's three examples of varying degrees of of complexity. The Chicago example on the top left, um you can see pretty clearly puts pedestrians first and then transit and then biking. Um the Minneapolis example at the bottom puts uh walking and using a wheelchair at the top of the hierarchy. Um they sort of punted and had bikes and transit on one level there uh and then driving at the bottom. The Portland hierarchy is quintessentially Portland in its complexity and inclusion of some interesting things like fully autonomous electric vehicles and other shared vehicles in their hierarchy. So you can see there's different ways of approaching it. What's pretty common across the board with these and with others is that walking pedestrians, people are put at the at the top of the hierarchy. And then driving, especially driving a single occupancy vehicle is put at the bottom of the hierarchy. Uh where transit and biking happen, sort of uh they tend to flip-flop depending on the city and depending on what the priorities are. So the hierarchy is becoming increasingly um important. It becomes increasingly important as we try to make our streets more complete, when we try to put more in there. So a- and especially in those constrained situations where we have to make those decisions, we have to weigh trade-offs. So here's an example of a challenging street uh where trade-offs would be required. Uh if anyone doesn't recognize this, this is Willie Street at Baldwin. Uh what do we have here? We have uh businesses that want on-street parking. There are relatively few off-street lots um for several of these um properties. There's a lot of foot traffic, uh people want to be able to bike to all these destinations. But it's also a commuter route uh to and from downtown with um parking restrictions during rush hour. You know, significant amount of uh traffic uh also in this area due to the two schools that are blocked uh away from Willie Street and and lots of kids that cross Willie Street on a daily basis. So what do we, what do we do here? Whose interests do we prioritize in this situation? If we're going in to reconstruct the street, how would we decide between bike lanes or keeping the on-street parking? If we can't fit everything in, even if we removed all the trees, and and who would, who would want to do that? Who would want to take out all the trees from this block as well? So the way trade-offs are made in this particular situation is probably, most of you know, is the transit is handled one block over on Jennifer Street and one block the other way is the Bike Boulevard, the connection to the the Cap City Trail. Is this a perfect solution? Maybe not, uh but it is kind of a good example of where complete streets doesn't necessarily mean we do everything everywhere. Uh but it is about getting us to a point where we have complete networks. So within a block, we have transit, within a block, we have a a um primary bike lane, one example there. So here's a a different sort of example. Uh this is South Park Street near the Belt Line at at Badger Road. Um this street and intersection uh and intersection in particular really clearly prioritize driving. There's, there's no question about that. You can see it um in terms of the number of lanes and the lane widths and just the general pedestrian environment. And you know, many people would argue that that's appropriate since it's just a block away from the Belt Line. But would the people that live in the apartments over here on the right side of the image agree with that? Uh and and especially those that want to get safely across over to the metro transfer center on the other side of the street. So again, whose, whose needs do we prioritize here? Here's a spot a little bit further up on Park Street. Um again, should this street prioritize commuter traffic over the people that live in these townhouses or or not? And it's not necessarily a question of eliminating the commuter traffic, but prioritizing things and and sort of setting the tone. So an important way of thinking about the hierarchy is whose needs are most important or whose needs are most important most of the time uh when we approach streets. So I'll go back to one of the examples and just say that in not every case is the hierarchy set in stone and it's only one way um in every situation. In Chicago, the default is pedestrians, transit, bicycle and auto. But they do have alternatives that that do require individual approval. But in some situations, bicycle comes before transit and in fact, before pedestrians. In other cases, autos come before everything else. So there is some variability that can be built into a mode hierarchy. There are several different ways that we could develop a mode hierarchy. Most cities and and what I generally advocate for is to create a single citywide hierarchy. Uh but it is possible to have variations based on uh, for example, context, different um parts of the city. Uh different development patterns may have different degrees of hierarchy, different types of hierarchies. Um another is to use priority networks to identify a hierarchy. Some streets may have one hierarchy, others may have a different one. And this is one of the things we want to test with the community, um asking questions like, should blank, should walking always be a priority? For example, or should we prioritize different things on different streets? Uh this is just an example from Grand Rapids where they have taken a uh modal priority network approach to the mode hierarchy. So um at this point, based on um what we know, based on um past planning efforts, based on the inputs that uh we received so far during this project, and that talked a lot about putting people first. She talked a lot about some of the um frustrations with using transit and the importance of that. Um we are proposing a single citywide hierarchy. Um and what this essentially is saying is that we prioritize the safety, comfort and convenience of people walking and using wheelchairs um above other modes, that that's our number one top thing that we need to work on. Now, for some streets, that may not look all that different than what we have today. Um and it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to provide more, a greater percentage of of the right of way to people walking and biking. It means that the safety of people walking and biking, or sorry, of people walking and using wheelchairs um is is the top um priority. Uh we have put transit next in this proposed hierarchy uh because of its role as an integral part of moving people and the fact that there are a lot of people that are dependent on uh the transit system year round. We have biking in as third, and biking will be a top priority after walking on many streets, um especially when we think about streets that don't have transit on them. So when you look at all streets in Madison, the vast majority don't have transit. So the vast majority would have biking as the second priority after walking. But what we're looking at here, in other words, is where a trade-off has to be made between biking and transit. If it is a transit priority street or if it's a street that has um transit on it, the transit would generally be prioritized, again, in this proposed hierarchy. Um we have all forms of motor vehicles uh next. Um you may wonder why one of those cars has a tail on it, uh that's a electric uh an electric plug, um sort of meant to symbolize new mobility, electric vehicles. And and we really recommend not separating autonomous vehicles or electric vehicles or other types of things from standard cars because of the functional similarities between them, because they generally are intended to carry single occupants or that's what ends up working in practice a lot of times, and they take up a similar amount of space, operate at similar speeds and so forth to conventional cars. Um we've put deliveries on this level as well. Uh one thing that's not illustrated on here, um but could be, is putting through freight on a lower level. Uh we did not include that on here, um so it could be considered with the other motor vehicle traffic. Um we've put parking at the bottom, uh and that's simply a way to to talk about moving cars being prioritized above the storage of cars on streets. Uh emergency services are also not shown on this slide because they'll be accommodated at all levels is the intent. So this is a work in progress, we're interested in your feedback on this. I'm sure people will have differing opinions about the way this should go. Uh but this is also something that we feel is really important to test um in the next round of community engagement. And it may turn out that we need to do different hierarchies for different priority networks or different contexts. Um so this is something that we really do need to work through more. Tom, I see your hands up, I don't know if you want to jump in now or if that was for later on.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, um I just want to provide a caveat to the board in that I particularly asked Adam to put a modal hierarchy out there for discussion because we we just need to begin discussing it. So uh please don't um necessarily jump on Tool or Adam or anything for proposing one way or not. I just felt like this is a um it's a discussion that we needed to have and this would be one way of just getting the discussion out there for uh for the board to to have. So I I just wanted to do that caveat and then I'll I'll pull back, thanks.
Okay, um you're you're too kind of consultants, Tom, that's what we're here for, is to be jumped on. Okay, um should I go ahead and move forward?
It looks like we have a question or we can hold off. We do, we also do have a problem, a register for public comment, so if you are going to continue the presentation, I'd say go ahead.
Okay, let me finish up, I don't have a whole lot more. Want to talk just briefly about the street typology um and go through real quickly just a reminder of what it is for anybody that's not familiar. Uh it's a collection of common street designs, this is something we're going to be creating. They may not exactly be street designs we have today. Each one's going to prioritize, you know, functions, uses and various elements differently based on context and character. They're going to be based on things such as roadway function, modal priorities and built environment. It does not replace functional classification, that is, you know, arterial street, collector's street, local street. Um it can change, that doesn't mean all of um, for example, Mineral Point is all going to be one street type the entire way. There may be some different street types applied to it based on context. And um finally, it's aspirational, so the street types need to present a vision for how um common recurring types of streets will look in the future. Uh so refer back to that presentation on the Odana area that we saw earlier. Gammon um Road may look different in the future as the mall area potentially redevelops into the RMX um type of zoning. Uh it may not look as much like it does now, it may look more like, for example, East Washington or something along those lines. And this is just to illustrate that each street type may serve a variety of functions. They they may each serve all functions, but um to different degrees or prioritize things differently. Um so we may end up with some sort of graphic like this at a later point. There are a lot of different potential ways or inputs we could put into the street typology to come up with what our types are. I'm not going to read all of those bullets, um because I have a few slides I'll show you. But our goal is really to come up with six to twelve But our goal is really to come up with six to 12 permutations of these six to 12 street types that are relatively simple. So they're things that people can generally remember. So what we're thinking is having a few different inputs. One is modal priority networks. So that could be priority transit corridors. It could be primary and secondary bikeways, something along those lines. Context is another possibility. These are a few, a couple of these are images from the Imagine Madison Plan, like the corridors and centers graphic, future land use plan. Those could be options for context that could influence, or simply something like the urban transect, which is that diagram on the bottom where, you know, urban core downtown type areas have a different sort of context than general urban neighborhoods and so forth. We, we talk about street intensity a little bit. Again, this could be really closely related to functional classification, but this is something that has, has historically been the starting point of street design. We don't think functional classification should necessarily be the starting point, but it is an important factor for us to consider. So we think that'll probably play in somehow. And then we have some really important things like urban canopy priority and green infrastructure priority areas. That's the green and complete green streets. Where those priority areas are is something yet to be defined. And then equity is also a really important typology input and we need to keep exploring exactly how that works. Real quickly, I want to show you just a couple of examples of how inputs have been used to create a typology. This is in Seattle. If you look, there are four place types. So the purple, orange, green and blue represent four place types. And then there are three levels of intensity, which they have tied to functional classification. That really cleanly leads to 12 different street types. This is Ames, Iowa, a small community. They have looked at context and then transportation function as two of the key inputs. And one of the things I'll point out here is you can see some of the street types are repeated. So it's not necessarily in this case that every combination has its own street type. But it's a way of identifying where the street types are appropriate in this community. So the, the path forward we're proposing is to use modal priority networks. So transit priority networks, bike priority networks and so forth that are yet to be developed. And context, again, we need to figure out what is the appropriate way to define context to create that typology. So this matrix sort of shows an example of how modal priority networks and context can come together to create some street types. And in this case, there are five different colors. Maybe that represents five street types. But we also see an important secondary level of this to use street intensity such as functional classification to start to split some of these. We feel like there's going to be, need to be some places where we have a higher intensity. For example, transit street in a mixed use area versus a lower intensity transit street in a mixed use area. Those may end up having two different street types associated with it. And then, as I mentioned, ultimately the overlays. We see the overlays probably not resulting in new street types themselves, but rather will be something used to adjust the priority levels of different elements within them. So for example, if it's an urban canopy priority area, the importance of that terrace width is going to have a higher degree than it would otherwise. That may trigger some trade-offs to say, you know what? We're instead of doing an eight-foot sidewalk here, we're going to do a six-foot sidewalks. We can have a slightly wider terrace to support urban canopy. Or maybe we take space away from on-street parking, just as an example. So next steps on the street type will be to refine and define those modal priority networks, as I mentioned. Develop street type descriptions and some simple graphics of them. Test some of these concepts with the community, get some feedback. Then refine those street type descriptions and graphics. Develop parameters and priorities within each one of those. So I just mentioned sidewalk width and terrace width, that's an example of parameters. And then ultimately map those out. And this, this is going to be something that's going to occur over the next several months as we're working through the stage two of community outreach. And we'll come back and give you updates on this as well. Then that segues into an updated, updated schedule. We're looking at an October meeting with you to give you an update on the typology work so far, to show you what we're working with, the feedback we're getting and kind of how that's shaping out. From November into March, we'll be on the technical side, getting started with our canopy and green infrastructure, conditions and needs assessment, as well as working on the design parameters aspect of the street typology, assuming we come out of October generally heading in the correct direction. And then at some point during that window, probably in winter or spring, we'll look at, at scheduling that multi-city workshop to start testing some of these. You can play with them. We can figure out what works and what maybe needs to be adjusted. And, and once we go through that, we'll come back to you with refined typologies and, and parameters. And then moving into next year to actually get the documents and everything developed and built out. And that's the end of my presentation.
All right, thank you. We do have one registrant for public comment, Bob Schaefer. I see he's still with us. Bob, if you're there.
Yep, I'm here.
Three minutes, yeah, you begin when you're ready.
Okay. One of the things that occurs to me is that when we look at all the various modes of operation, the cars or trucks have only one place that they can operate on, and that is on streets. They cannot operate on bicycle paths. They cannot operate on sidewalks. They cannot operate on the other areas that other people can use to move around. So that when we look at some of the other cities that you brought up, such as Detroit and Chicago, that one of the things that you'll find on those cities is that they generally have a freeway or some other mode of transportation that, that motor vehicles can use. The other question that is not really explored, in my opinion, is finding out why people use a particular mode of transportation. And if we are looking at the automobile as it gives a person the option to go where they want to go, when they want to go and with whom they want to go, that then bicycles operate in that same way, but they don't get them at, as fast as anything. So I think that when we look at providing modes of transportation, that when you look at public transportation, if you study the Madison Metro transportation ridership and you also look at the population, you will see that the public transportation metro ridership has actually been declining over the years when population has increased. So on a person that the ridership is actually decreasing, which means that public transportation is not the mode of choice of the majority of people in, in Madison. So I think that what we need to do is look at other alternatives, look at other modes that might exist out there or future modes of transportation. When we look at the motorized scooters, motorized bikes, you know, that are going to be capable of achieving speeds similar to automobiles and giving the same level of service as an automobile or even better because of the lower parking space required and that, and the ability to maneuver better. So I, I think that when we miss looking at things like this and we jump to the conclusion that we need to do something about cars, you know, that we, we, we miss looking at the overall thing and that Madison has about three or four United States highways that operate either on the peripheral or through the city. And so I think that when we look at those routes, the system routes that, and we see where is travel coming from and why is it that way, that then we can move forward. We can't just look at it and say, we got to do something about cars and cars are bad. That when we look at the streets.
Please drop it off, Bob.
Yep, the streets are designed for cars. They would not have the same level, thickness of pavement and everything like that if they were just for pedestrian and bicycle use.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any questions for our speaker? Seeing none, were there any registrants, late registrants for this topic?
Um, no, there were not.
Okay, thank you. Questions for our presenters? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks, thanks, Adam. For the modal hierarchy, I guess first is a kind of process question. So we saw tonight the proposed hierarchy for Madison and Tom stepped up to take the heat on that. Are you looking for feedback from us tonight on that? Are you planning on putting that out for public input in this next phase? If so, are you putting it out there as, as the proposal? Or are you, I guess, yeah, what are, what are you looking for, thinking about in terms of process for kind of landing on a final hierarchy?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. Is it helpful for me to have my screen shared still? Should I go back to that or does it matter to anybody? I can stop sharing.
I think you can probably turn it off as far as I'm concerned, get better video.
I can always share it again if need be. That, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. We certainly want to get community feedback on this because I think it's probably a question that most people have not really pondered or maybe they have, but may not really be aware of what generally their neighbors and other people in the community may, may feel. So we want to get community feedback on that. We want to get reactions to it to sort of see how people respond to it. We're certainly interested in getting, in getting your reactions and thoughts as well. I think one of the things that we are trying to do here is to put things forward as a, as something for people to react to. So we're, we're kind of starting a conversation here by saying, here's, based on what we've heard during this first round, based on what people say they want to see centered and what people say, you know, is they're dependent on to get to work and all that sort of stuff. This is kind of where things have landed. But it is not intended to be set in stone. And we can certainly, you know, I think Tom's point was really good. We can certainly think about how we frame this as whether we're saying this is proposed or we're saying this is a, you know, a, a working draft or something so that it's not interpreted as being something that, you know, TPVB is proposing at this point or what have you.
Um, that's helpful. I think, you know, so this, this is a concept I'm, you know, very familiar with. And yet, like when it's presented and now and for, for our city, right? And there's this, this question and this conversation. I, I find myself really even struggling to, to fully understand, like, what does this mean? And what is the significance of saying transit then biking versus biking then transit or putting them on the same level like Minneapolis does? And, you know, like I, and when, when I can kind of come up with an answer, I kind of worry that my answer is maybe not even correct. Like, I mean, you, you gave the example of Willie Street, you know, we can imagine a scenario. Well, we have to decide between, you know, transit and, and biking, you know, that this is going to help us decide that. But I guess I, I kind of wonder, like, is that really, I mean, we, we already saw that those could be inverted for different, different streets as needed, really focused on network connectivity. So at the end of the day, like what, I mean, it makes a lot of sense from a values position to say, hey, we're really prioritizing these things that we've talked about in our plans, walking, biking and transit over driving. So that part sort of makes a lot of intuitive sense. But in terms of, and, and even the walking part on top, I mean, it just seems like, okay, that's human space. Like that should be on the top. That also makes sense. But I guess this question of like biking versus transit and the relative order, like what, what will this actually mean for us? If we, if we move forward with it the way it is, or if we inverted those, or if we put them on the same level? Like, how would that actually change future decision making?
I, I think that's a good question. I think you could answer it as well as I could potentially, as far as what it means for you in the future and what you do with it. You know, I think that it's, there's, there's value and simplicity of a single hierarchy. Because as you said, it, it very clearly signals intent and this is what our, our default position is. I think that having different hierarchies in different places makes a lot of sense as well. Where I go with this is thinking about streets where you're going to have transit and thinking about, okay, this is a transit street and we have to make trade-offs. Do we, do we negatively impact the transit in order to have better bike facilities? So that's where I kind of come from that. And I think that's a challenging decision to try to make. And it's maybe context dependent. It may depend on different types of streets. Some of the streets that BRT system are on may be different than we're talking about local routes going on, you know, North Street or something along those lines. You know, so I think that's a certainly something that'd be considered. And I think that's probably what Minneapolis was, you know, maybe the way they were going when they put the two on the same. You know, and maybe if we do that and we have the modal hierarchy, or sorry, the modal priority networks, if it's a transit priority street, maybe transit is above biking. If it's a bike priority street, maybe the flip-flop. We need to think though, about at what point does transit taking priority over biking make biking not feasible on that street? And vice versa, at what point does biking having priority over transit make transit operations really bad on the street? So that's just, it's, there's not a clear answer on that. It's kind of a, a hard thing to chew through.
Yeah, no, that, that all sounds right. I guess, you know, and I'll definitely be interested to do some more thinking personally and want to hear kind of what the community input on this is. I, I think my initial instinct on it is I, I, I'm really interested in that, in that network component. And I think that's where, that's where those tough decisions are going to get hashed out, right? Yeah, I, we're not going to have everything on every street. I think hopefully everybody's getting that clear. So absolutely, there will need to be places where we're prioritizing transit over biking and vice versa. So it almost feels like that's kind of the more important one in my mind is understanding how we create these different networks that, that, that work. So my, my instinct with the modal hierarchy as a like general values-based kind of high-level framework. I, I guess I do worry a little bit of sort of putting biking below transit. It's like, what is that signaling? And are we sort of, you know, I, I, I don't know. I, 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 looking at Minneapolis's, to me, that one does, it feels better for some reason that they're just sort of both there together. And yeah, we're going to have to work through on a case by case where those two things are in tension. You know, what, what gets priority in each situation? So I guess just initial feedback on that is I would, I would just hate to, to, to signal that we're sort of de-emphasizing the importance of building out our, our bike networks. I think we've been making really great progress and I think there's a lot of, a lot of promise for us still on that. My, I think my only other question was on the, the parking one. I think when I was reading like Chicago's plan, I think they kind of explicitly say like, we don't even show parking because it's not a mode. Like that's part of the like street furniture and trees and these other things that come after the modal hierarchy. And so I don't know if there was any conversations about that, but I really like sort of emphasizing that it's even below driving. But in practice, I wonder if, if we should be treating it as a mode or maybe in that other category like green infrastructure, these other things. But because I think in many ways, it, it probably will be treated that way. And I'm almost wondering, like you showed at the end, the overlay zones, maybe we have overlay zones for green infrastructure, trees, et cetera. Maybe we should be thinking that way for parking as well. You know, as we started to look at parking policy stuff, it seems like there are, there are places where the value is going to be much higher for having on-street parking and other places where it's pretty low. And so maybe thinking about on-street parking and kind of an overlay sort of sensibility might, might make sense. So, you.
All right, Chris, you're up next. Although Tom, was your comment in follow-up to Alder Foster's statement or?
Yeah, I think the comments that he just made were just the types of comments that we need to start having. So I appreciate, you know, like Alder Foster felt like a parallel bike transit might be more appropriate. It doesn't mean that we have to go there, but it's good to just start getting those types of inputs. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. I had pretty similar thoughts, probably not surprising, but thanks for the presentation and for all the work so far. So on the, the hierarchy, had really the same thought that like, I think the most controversial part of this is going to be the, the bus bike piece. And I think it's good that we're having that conversation. It gets me thinking, but I also wonder if maybe what we're aiming for is something more like putting them on the same level. But maybe, maybe it really is about, I don't want to overcomplicate things, but putting them in different boxes on the same level. And then using the context zones and the street types to sort out, you know, when one rises above the other. Maybe that's simple enough to really get at what we're trying to accomplish here. And then I think that's all on that. Most of what I was thinking was already said. And then also I had a, a thought on the parking piece. I hadn't thought about pulling it out. My thought was actually that if it is. My thought was actually that if it is going to be in the hierarchy, then it ought to be parking and other things that fall into this, the other right of way space. So I think if it, if it does belong in the hierarchy, then it's probably parking and terraces and parklets and all those things. In which case, I don't know what that does to the hierarchy, but I think it might still make sense. I think the roads are primarily for vehicles of all types first. So those are my, my true reactions to the hierarchy itself. And then just one other thought broadly, similarly, trying to think about how this is going to be applied. Like, I think it's great that we've gone through this exercise where we've, we've understood what folks' values are and we translated this into sort of an overarching, you know, hierarchical principle that can help us make decisions. But then as I think through, like, my experience of the Transportation Commission where a lot of these decisions get hashed out, you know, when regardless of what the hierarchy says, you know, there's going to be a pedestrian crossing that just causes too much delay or there's going to be concerns about losing parking. And so I'm really trying to look forward to thinking about how, how is this going to help in those situations? How will we be able to point to this? Balance that with what we're hearing from folks' interest on the ground and make that decision or at least help us make that decision with with some more backing. So I, I hope something along those lines come out, comes out of this, this process. I know, like you said, at the end of the day, it's going to come down to how we want to use it. But I think that's, that's part of the real need because it's not just about, you know, an engineer sitting down and deciding how to allocate the the right of way. You know, it's really about making those tough decisions. So, thanks.
If I could just quickly respond to the parking question, I think that's a really good point. And we sort of put that in here a little bit to prompt discussion. It's not a mode and it is very context dependent, as is things like terrace width and sidewalk width and how we use our frontage. So it could certainly go either way. One thing I would say is that what I consistently see across the country is usually the big trade off or the big debate is between parking and bike lanes. So it usually gets elevated almost to the importance of a mode. And so I think, you know, we can certainly see arguments both ways for leaving it in or taking it out and would appreciate any other thoughts on that.
All right, thank you. Alder Harrington McKinnon, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I do apologize for having joined late, but I joined in the middle of the presentation. More specifically, I joined when Equity by Design was making their presentation. And it's interesting, and Tom, thank you for putting this in now for discussion because absolutely it is, I'm calling it a placeholder for discussion. I thought it was quite interesting that people in underrepresented communities pointed to Monroe Street as the example of where they would like to be. And I want to say, and Annette, thank you, thank you for this presentation. But I really want to say, as we're making these decisions, what I heard in the presentation is, is that, yes, there will be trade offs. That is understandable. But the voice for people who will be using these modes of trans, transportation will also have a seat at the table or their voices will be heard. And so that's what I'm hearing. And it's interesting when, when you say, oh, biking should not be diminished or should be on top. And so those are the conversations that we are not having in our underrepresented communities. What is represented? And so what I don't want us to lose sight of is having those conversations where they don't normally hear from voices that stand up and say, this is what, this is how this impacts me. So I want to make sure that we're, we're really hearing that presentation on diversity and what people are saying. And I'm looking forward to phase two, really coming out and having a more robust discussion of what transportation means for all people, not just whether it's biking or walking or, but safety, all of those things. I think that those voices need to be heard. And so I wanted to make sure I got that in.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional questions for any of our presenters or staff? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, just one other comment, based on what I've heard. You know, Adam, I don't know if it makes sense, but this kind of concept of designing from the outside in, the inside out that's talked about sometimes, I wonder if that's something that could be moved into these conversations, especially like with these public conversations and as it relates to parking of, okay, when we're talking about street typologies and we're saying in these streets, we're really, we're wanting to prioritize first, let's make sure we've got a good, safe, comfortable place for people to walk. And we want to make sure we've got a place for buses if they're going to be there for for bikes. This is a priority, you know, green street for whatever reason, where they're, and then sort of working out and then, okay, well, whatever's left, we don't have some space for on-street car parking, right? Like, so maybe that's one of the ways that, and maybe that's where I was getting at with this kind of overlay zone concept is, like, you, I don't think it's the same as modal hierarchy, but it's almost, maybe it's more in terms of developing those street typologies of sequencing and prioritizing and getting people to understand that we're gonna, we're gonna, instead of starting with this and what's left over for walking, et cetera, we're going to start with the things that we really do, are saying that we want to prioritize. And then we'll see what's left for those things that are at the bottom of the list.
I'm not sure if there was a question in there, but I'm going to pretend like there was because I want to say something. I, I, I think that, yes, where, where I envision this heading is that for each street type, there will be some sort of priority ranking. And it may not be, you know, here's one through 12, but high priority, medium priority, low priority. And so for some, the width of the terrace is going to be a high priority. For others, the, you know, the presence of on-street parking may be a high priority where there really is no off-street parking and loading zones are needed. So that as you go through, you can see here are the four things that are top priority and we need to make sure we work those in. It's, it's kind of similar to saying from the outside in, but it's just looking at it from a slightly different perspective. Yeah, I see something like that being really important in each individual street type.
All right, thank you. Baltazar, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And Annette and Myra, you know, and Adam, thank you very much for this presentation. I, it is, it is, it gives me hope when, when I, when I hear this presentation and the work that is getting done in the city of Madison, you know, to bring our communities of color into this, this conversation. It really, you know, gives me, gives me hope. I, I wish, I wish we could have had this type of conversations, you know, many, many years ago, but I, I am very, very hopeful. You know, for, for, for me, it's not, it's not new. Many of these things that I, that I hear, you know, I, especially that comparing Monroe Street to, you know, like the ultimate neighborhood. And, you know, I, I think, I think all of our community members deserve to have a place better than Monroe Street, you know? And anyway, so I just, I just wanted to mention, thank you for bringing that. Thank you for really talking about equity and, and bringing those communities into this conversation. This is what we always hear at the Latino Academy, some of our students, every time we talk about what are some of the issues around the street, you know, safety and all of that. So, you know, I, I, I am very, very concerned that the majority of our community members of color sees safety on the streets as a big issue, you know? And I'm sure some of that has to do with the inequities that has been for, for many, many years in the city of Madison, you know? Anyway, so I just wanted to, to, to point that out. And this is the first step. I am really, when I be looking forward to the, to the next conversations. One thing that, thank you very much for mentioning that during these types of issues and COVID, you know, some, some, some of these questions, some of these surveys are not the priority to our community who are suffering, who do not have a place to be, who do not have food in the table. So just the fact that we are acknowledging that, you know, it means that at least we are going in the, in the right direction. So thank you very much for acknowledging that because that's, that's so important. Sometimes we just bring surveys to community members and without thinking, you know, what are some of their current priorities? So to thank, thank you for all the work in that area.
All right, thank you, Baltazar. Any more questions or comments for our staff or presenters? All right, seeing none. I hope we've provided you with the feedback you were looking for. We look, as I heard, we look forward to seeing you again in a couple of months. Thank you for all the work that you've done. Last call for additional comments. Seeing none, thanks again to all of our presenters. We will then be moving on to Legisar 66899, adopting a fair policy recommendation.
Good evening, everyone. So as you know, we've presented fair policy to this board a handful of times over the summer, the last several months. We had a public meeting on July 21st where we went through this material. And then we had a public hearing again with you all at the last meeting on August 2nd. Based on that, there's one, so we, we proposed a handful of recommendations around fair policy. The one piece that seemed to be the most troublesome for people is around cash collection. And so in this, what we're presenting to you today, we have not proposed to eliminate cash collection on board. We are proposing to keep it for now. It's still at some point in the future. If cash use drops to something that's extremely small, we may revisit that, that question. But for now, we'll move forward, assuming that we'll continue to collect cash on, on all services for the, for, you know, for as long as, until we change our mind, until we, we bring another action to you to change it. And so with that, we would be purchasing ticket vending machines for all BRT stations and so that we can have that cash collection on board there as well as continuing to use our, our existing fare boxes for the time being on our other local bus routes. So this process is, is a bit unique and challenging to navigate through our board committee process, our board and commission. And so we've, we've kind of separated it out to make it clear what the TPVB's role is in approving the policy around fair collection and then what the TC's, the Transportation Commission's role will be in the future around the implementation. So in a nutshell, TPVB would approve an action tonight, approving the policy that would allow us to move forward and release and prepare a request proposal for vendors. TC would be the body responsible for approving that contract and ensuring that it makes, it complies with the policy that this board sets. As we move into implementation phase, there will be a, a fair number of decision points around implementation, but again, we'll go to TC for their final approval. And then we would move towards implementation. So essentially, you're, you're approving the policy now. TC would approve the contract and then TC would approve the implementation details again, you know, maybe six months or so from now. So I'll read through the, the document around what we're actually acting, asking you to approve tonight. This was shared in Legisar, but staff is recommending that TPVB approve a fair collection policy in accordance with the following principles. A new fare system is to be operational on or before the start of BRT operations in the summer of '24. A new system to be implemented on both BRT and local routes. Allow users to add monetary value to accounts to be used for transit travel, so an account based system. Allow users to validate their account media at any door of the bus, all door boarding. A reduced, create a reduced fare program for eligible users with the ability to pay balances after a ride. So this is where members of a reduced fare program can pay, can have a negative balance and pay their balance later. Continue to collect cash onboard local buses for single ride fares only. BRT stations to include these cash reload kiosks or ticket vending machines that can also dispense new fare media. Create a contract with retailers to enable reloading accounts with cash at those retailers. Utilize fare capping to allow users to pay up to a limit with rides after that limit being free. Accept payment via mobile phone and other third-party media enabled by the new fare system. So this might be include contactless credit cards if available. Integration with ID cards from major partners such as UW so that they don't have to distribute new separate passes. Create a time duration transfer period to replace transfer slips so that we don't have to have distributing lots of different media. And then accept payments on this new system through our paratransit system, which right now only allows cash. So that is the, the policy guidance that we're asking you all to approve or amend, you know, if you so desire. And again, that would allow us to move forward with the RFP for the, move forward with the design or of the RFP for fare collection. So yeah, with that, I will, I know that we've given this presentation to you all a couple of times, and so I won't go into the, all the details again. But again, happy to answer any questions and or discussion with all of you.
Thank you, Justin. We do have one registered for public comment, Bob Schaefer. Bob, I see you're still with us. You have three minutes and you may begin when you're ready.
All right, okay, I'm, I'm with you, right?
Yep, you're here.
Okay, okay. Yeah, this is an interesting topic here that one of the items that is in the fare concept that is in, was in there was the, the automobile fee, not getting the right word for it, but that where the question comes up is that when we are looking at the users of the, of the bus system and, and where those users are coming from, also the outlying areas, that is it fair that only the city of Madison automobiles are experiencing that, that automobile tax? If we're going to make that something that the whole community is being asked to support, then I think that to dump that load simply on the, on the Madison population is not fair. And especially since many of the low income users who have to depend upon their automobile because bus transportation does not work well for them, that I, I think that that ought to need, needs to be considered, reconsidered as an, an option. And I think that when we look at the bus passes, the free bus passes that are being given out, that the question that also needs to be asked is, what income levels are those free bus passes being given out to? Are they only being given out to those people who are low income? Or are people getting them whose salaries are, you know, even up to $100,000 or more? So I think that what we need to do is look at people providing their fair share to support that system if you're not going to require a, enough of a user fee to cover the expenses of the, of the bus system. Those are my comments.
Bob, are there any questions for our speaker? Seeing none. Questions for staff, for Justin? Seeing none. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, just one question, Justin, on the question of transfers. So I mentioned the sort of time credit to do away with the paper media transfer ticket. Would that, how would that work with the cash fare? Or would you, would we maintain paper transfers in those cases? Or that just wouldn't be eligible if you're paying with cash or?
So I think we could certainly continue to do the paper transfer slips. We would definitely like to get away from any paper media at all. And so I think it would be our preference to have that. And so I think it would be our preference to have that true, the cash fare truly just to be for a single ride. I think the legitimacy of that will somewhat be dependent upon the network redesign, right? If we're still having people go through transfer points and forcing transfers, that I feel we probably will need to continue with paper slips. If not, if we've designed a system where transfers aren't required for most trips, then we may be able to get away without that. But ultimately, I think that we can make sure that that's included as one of the details within the TC implementation details.
And then the, the scenario with the cash machines for, if you start your trip at a BRT, you would put the cash in, you'd actually get a, a paper ticket valid for a ride. Would it, did that have a date time stamp on it?
So those would actually be actual fare media. So they would distribute a card that could be reused and reload an account value. And so they may be, they may not be the hard plastic card like a credit card, but they would be a, you know, a more temporary type nature. But they would be an account-based fare media card that you can continue to use for months and reload value to. But at some point, you can go to a retail location and trade that in for an actual hard plastic card.
And obviously you could use it for, if, if you didn't need to transfer to a local route, it would already have your sort of validation on there. Really only question, if you start on a local and then you need to transfer to BRT then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for the updated recommendations. I, I think that they all sound really, really good to me. And I appreciate that we're not pressing the, the issue of eliminating cash fares at this point. I think there's a lot of, makes a lot of sense in the long term. But I think we just need to make sure that we've really understood who's depending on that and, and making sure we're confident with the alternatives we have in place. So I appreciate the recommendations.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And I think all the research points to that we think people will transition from cash to this new system. And then eventually cash use will be, will be almost nothing. But we need to prove that and that that is the case here, so.
All right, thank you. Any further, any further questions or comments? All right, is there a motion? Alder Furman?
Move approval of the fair policy that pertains to Transportation Policy Planning Board as presented by staff.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Is there a second, second, Badri? Any further or any discussion? Alder Furman, would you like to speak to your motion?
I, I, I will just reiterate what Alder Foster said. I appreciate the updates. I appreciate the new position related to cash. I hope we're in a, in a better place a few years down the road. But I do think that that is something that's necessary and I'm glad that that will be part of the policy going forward for now. Thank you.
Yeah, Alder Furman, any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion to approve the policy direction about how fares are collected as it was laid out to us by Justin and, and shown in the documents on Legisstar. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Chair believes unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that what we're doing is unanimous. Thank you. All right, the last item we have for the evening is Legisstar 66901, BRT update, financial plan.
Yeah, I'll just mention that with some of the recent changes in construction prices associated with construction really across all industries, our cost estimate for the BRT has changed just in the modest amount. I think if Justin's still on, he'll just give just a very brief summary. This isn't really surprising. It really doesn't change the city's standpoint and our position in the funding program. But it's just more of an, an update of how, I guess, economic conditions across the globe are affecting us in a small amount. So just, if Justin's still here, Justin, are you still here?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so as Tom mentioned, we got some new inflation numbers that probably, and probably unsurprising to most of you, they were higher than historical norms. You know, construction cost inflation has been in the three to 4% range for a while. These latest numbers that we got were at five and a half percent. And that there are some thoughts that it may actually be closer to 7% by the end of this year. And so, you know, we need to reflect that as reality in our cost estimates for the BRT. Because the last thing we want is for that to, you know, bite us at the end of the project. And FTA will look at that quite closely. So in making that adjustment, it did bring our overall cost of the project from 160 million to 166 million. However, we were able to accommodate that without any change into what we're currently planning from, from an appropriation, local appropriations perspective. And that's mainly because the value of the, the Brayton Lot and the Junction Road Lot that we've already, the council invited to include into the project. We got those appraisals back and they came in higher than we expected. And so we were able to use the value, the, the extra value in those properties to match another $3 million in federal grants. So, so basically that, that $6 million increment is 50% covered by an increased value of those two pieces of property. And the other $3 million would be an increase in the federal grant amount from 80 million to 83 million. We did have a conversation with FTA. They are supportive. This is typical. They, you know, would much rather us be reflecting this reality and many of their other agencies are going through the same process. And they are able to make slight, you know, small, less than 10% administrative adjustments in the grant amount to reflect things like this when we get to that, that grant execution process. So they, they generally felt comfortable with this change. So just wanted to, to give you all an update on that. And again, the project cost is going up, but our local contribution is not. So that's the bottom line. Have you answered any questions?
Justin, we do have one registered for public comment, Bob Schaefer. Looks like you're still with us. You have three minutes. You may begin when you're ready.
Hey, that, one of the things that I think that, what I've seen in this is that we haven't really looked at actually the full scope of how we're going to do this. And it almost looks to me like a field of dreams. One of the things I have not seen is a concrete plan of how you're going to be able to have local bus passengers transfer to the BRT buses. If the BRT buses and the local buses are not able to use the same platforms, it means that people are going to probably have to at least walk a block or more in order to combine, get that transfer or that the local buses are going to have to cross East Washington and other streets in order to complete, right, because they can't make a U-turn. The other side of that coin is that I'm going to be sending you an article of January, July 15th, 2021 about the SEPTA electric bus things. That they've, what they found is that the weight of the batteries are causing the frames to crack. And so their bus fleet that they got in with the electric buses are all sitting in storage. And that when we're going ahead with these 60-foot buses, that there is a concern as to the, the weight capacity of that. There are some places on the West Coast that have implemented them, but they're so recent. And so I, I, I think that the other side of that is that they're listed to have about a 200-mile range before needing to be recharged. My question would be, is that would the buses during the course of a day need to have recharging every time they got to the station? And is there a need to have those expensive recharging places there? Or would it be more advantageous to have a time period where the buses could be recycled for that, that recharge time? And we really don't know what the amount of time that recharge is going to take place. So there's a lot of undefined aspects of this plan that seem to be left out and at least to my knowledge, and not considered. So I, I really think that to move forward on this, that we need to have more concrete evidence. And we need to have some factors such as ridership projections and all that that are based on.
Please wrap it up, Bill, or Bob?
Yes, ridership numbers that are based on reality considering the current metro ridership plans.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any questions for our speaker? Seeing none. Questions for Justin or comments? All right, seeing no questions or comments, thanks for the update, Justin. That's all we have for the evening. I would entertain motions to adjourn. Alder Furman?
Move adjournment.
Looks like Badri's got the second. All those in favor of adjourning our meeting for the evening, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Appears to be unanimous. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
We're adjourned.